Welcome. Today is Thursday, August 22nd. The time is 5:15. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Leander City Council. Mr. Crabtree, if you could do a roll call.
Councilmember Catherine Patalian-Parker?
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson? Councilmember Jason Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Christine Settecriss?
Present.
Mayor Portem Crissonin?
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon?
Here.
Mayor Torreyhill?
Here. We do have a quorum. We can do business. So at this time, we're going to move to item three, where we receive effective and rollback tax rate calculations for fiscal year 2020. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. At your place at the DIAS is a Manila folder with some of the information that I'm going to go over for these items. The...this first item is simply to receive the effective tax rate calculations that Williamson County Tax Office has calculated for us. They were in your agenda packet, but I've also made a hard copy at the DIAS. It is the formal worksheet that the tax office goes through. It calculates the effective rate and the rollback rate for the city of Leander for fiscal year 2020. The calculated effective tax rate for next year is 54.803 cents. The calculated rollback rate is 58.2943 cents. They...I will stop there, and then we can move on to item number two when you're ready. But simply a motion to accept these calculations is in order for this tonight.
I'll make a motion to accept these calculations.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Four, we're going to discuss and consider a proposal to adopt a tax rate for fiscal year 2020. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State law requires that before the tax rate adoption process can start, the city council must vote to consider a proposed tax rate. That tax rate can be any number. It represents the ceiling, after which what you actually adopt can't exceed what you set as your ceiling tonight. The proposed...city manager's proposed tax rate is a decrease from the current year's tax rate of one cent, so it's 54.1867 cents. That proposed rate is below the calculated effective tax rate, which means if the city council chooses to stay at the effective tax rate or below, then the two additional public hearings would not be required, and we just move forward with the normal process. So the action tonight would be to vote to consider that a proposed tax rate. And then, again, the city manager's proposed tax rate that's in the proposed budget that you've received is based on a rate of 54.1867 cents, and that's about six tenths of one cent below the effective rate. Lots of numbers.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to set the ceiling at .541867.
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and second to set the ceiling and with an adoption of a tax rate later on. All in favor?
Wait. No discussion?
Okay.
Mr. Powers, about how much money would we be leaving on the table if we didn't accept the effective tax rate?
The one cent on our tax base this year represents about $545,000. So six tenths of that is a little over $320,000. I hate doing math in public, but roughly $300,000.
That's a lot of those unfunded jobs.
All right. Is there any more questions? All right. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Motion passes five to one. All right. That is the last one. Item five is not necessary, so we're going to move to six, move into a joint workshop with Cap Metro representatives. Mr. Clark. So we'll meet you down there.
We get honorary when it's this hot outside.
Yeah. I'm told on a daily basis to cut the suits and the tie. It's hard to give up. It's also like 90% of my wardrobe, so I don't know what else to... These are running t-shirts, so...
Talking about, we're supposed to be having a cool front. It's going to get down to 90.
That'll be lovely.
My next... It'll be very nice. Don't jinx it.
I'll take it. Well, thank you guys for coming out.
Thanks for having me.
Obviously, we had some good conversations, you know, along the way to get us here, and so we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say and doing a back and forth about where Leander is and what would be good for both of us. So we appreciate it.
And I've heard of my board member and Williamson County representative, Eric Stratton.
Sure thing. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just wanted to thank you all. As Eric Stratton, a member of the Cap Metro Board of Directors that represents Williamson County, wanted to thank you all for this opportunity, for bringing us together here for this work session, for an opportunity to sit down face to face in public and really kind of flesh out and discuss and hear what y'all's concerns are about where we've been, and then really kind of talk about and talk through where we're going and really look at some ways that...some things that Cap Metro's got going on that are pretty exciting. Find out what your views are on things and what your concerns are and really kind of just look forward to this dialogue and discussion about where we've been and where we can go in the future and what this can mean to the region for both transportation and economic development and specifically for the city of Leander. It's been a pleasure and an honor serving the people of Williamson County as a member of the Board of Directors. And as I've said before, I continue to be a resource for y'all. If there's anything that I can do to continue to facilitate this discussion in meetings like this, please feel free, any one of y'all, to reach out to me. And I've got the ear of the senior staff right here and happy to help make things like this happen. So thank you again, and we're looking forward to this conversation and discussion. With that, I'll turn it over to CEO Randy Clark.
Thanks, Eric. And I will say, Eric's been just a fantastic board member. He's heavily engaged, trying to soak up from Transit 101. He's, I feel like, Transit 701 already. But very engaged and really into making sure Cap Metro is really engaged with our community, working on all the services we've delivered to our community, but done in a really fiscally responsible way. He serves on our finance and administration audit committee, and he's doing a great job of that. And I really appreciate all the time that Eric's putting in. I'm not sure if he realized how much time he was volunteering for, but he's been a fantastic board member, and we appreciate that. And I think he brings the regional perspective, and that's one of the things... My perspective coming in to the area was that I think we really need to be more regional focused. We're 2.1 million as a region today. We're going to be 4 million people by 2040, based on the Campo estimates. And I think today, the state's article said we're like number 14 or number 15 in worst traffic in America. And we know projected between now and 2040, we're going to do 15% roadway enhancement throughout the whole region, and we're going to double in size. So one way or the other, we've got to become a little bit more regional in how we all work together and move people and facilitate that. And Cap Metro, I can tell you from a staff point of view, is heavily interested in that and wants to work with our partners. So I appreciate the fact that you gave us the opportunity to come here tonight, especially in a special meeting in the summer. And I know some of your school's back, so that's a...timing is always difficult. I also want to apologize. I know there's a meeting here in April. And as I mentioned to the mayor, I happen to have a previous scheduled trip. I kind of mentioned to you earlier, my wife was on the Boston Marathon. And it was watching her do the Boston Marathon that was scheduled for five months or come here, and she won. So...but I apologize. I wasn't here.
Did she win? Did she win?
This is important, but getting back home is a...yeah. But no, she did not win. But I will...I do apologize I wasn't here. But I do want to make sure you fully understand the commitment. I've given you all my card. I've talked to the mayor. I've been out a couple times. You've been down to my office a few times. We've talked on the phone a lot. We're 24/7. We're tons of people, so this is what we do. Never hesitate to call, email, ask a question. Want to talk? We'll come out here. Whatever happened in the past, happened in the past. I just look at that as, to me, the break, if you will, on the table. My job here is to work with everyone and our partners. We think you're a valuable partner. Today, we have represented multiple members of our senior team. We want to actually show you that. And we're more than willing to do as much as that is needed for the relationship. And of course, we welcome you down to Austin to our office anytime. That's valuable. So we have our head of planning, Roberta Gonzalez. Dave Deck is actually our vice president of rail. A few other members of our team as well. And then this is Dottie Watkins. Dottie is our acting chief operating officer. Oversees all of our bus, rail, paratransit operations, actually, construction facilities and a whole bunch of other stuff. Dottie's job is to actually do everything so the rest of us don't sleep. Yeah. And what I thought might be valuable, just so works for the mayor and the council members, is I know we've talked a lot about different information pieces, and we thought it might be valuable to go over a little bit of informational...you know, not to do PowerPoint to death, but some slides that kind of make sure we're setting the table on the fact base to say, here's Cap Metro today. Here's the things that we do. Here's the things we do with Leander. Here are the things that we are trying to accomplish longer term, and those are some improvements that are directly related to Leander, and some are just holistic regionally. Here are some financial elements. And then maybe a conversation, just so we're...you know, kind of just get all that out so we're all kind of the same knowledge base, if you will. And then whatever conversation you all want to have, we just want...we're really here to listen. You know, here's some information about Cap Metro, and then what ideas do you all have that we can be a better partner for you? And so at that point, you know, we'd love to just listen and maybe, as you said, Mayor, have a good conversation. So if that format works for you all, we have a short slide deck. I think it's available. And Dottie can go through that if that works.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council again. My name is Dottie Watkins, and I'm the acting chief operating officer. And we have just a handful of slides today to go through, really just an overview of the services that we currently provide and what our partnership currently looks like, as well as some of what we have on tap for the future. So starting with our current services in Leander. The Metro Rail Red Line launched in 2010, and is currently operating with 20 trips Monday through Thursday and additional trips on Friday, with our late night service in Friday returning to Leander at 1:35 a.m., so allowing residents to enjoy some later evening activities in the downtown area or throughout the service area and still being able to get home safely. Metro Express service has been in Leander since we really...since we started partnering with Leander. We currently operate two routes out of Leander, our routes 985 and 987, that connect Leander to our Lakeline station, as well as Central Austin destinations like the University of Texas, Downtown Austin, the Convention Center, the Capitol Complex, the Seton Complex that's on 38th Street. So really kind of all of that central core connected to Leander. The ridership on our Metro Express service has really grown gamebusters in the last couple of years. And when we started being able to operate on the manage...the MOPAC managed lanes, we've saw...we've seen significant increases in our ridership since then, over 30% increases and significant time savings, so that the residents of Leander can hop on a bus. We make one stop at Lakeline, and then we're straight into that managed lane. We're in its whole managed lane all the way to Downtown Austin, which gives us great travel times and also more reliable service. We have more predictability. And so we're better able to serve the region. We also, this past summer, launched Saturday service to Leander with our express bus service. So we're currently offering 30 trips on Saturdays on our express routes to allow residents from Leander to travel into the downtown Central Austin area for activities and events and that sort of stuff if they choose. And then really...
What is a trip defined as? Is that departures and arrivals or just departure?
So a trip is a one-way trip. So if there's 30 Saturday trips, then that's roughly 15 going in and 15 coming out.
So your 20 trips is 10 to Austin and 10 back?
Correct.
Correct. Yes.
So it's a boarding?
This is...this is actually a trip as in a vehicle trip.
A vehicle.
Yeah. In terms of boardings, we're currently carrying, in terms of boardings in Leander, so not counting the ones coming back, just under 500 folks on an average weekday. The split, not quite 50/50, a little heavier on our two express routes than the rail route. But that's in large part, we believe, because we currently are operating... We've shut down our downtown station this summer for construction, and so that's really driving that real number down. It will...it'll come back up when we're bringing the trains off and back into downtown later this fall. In addition to our scheduled services, the Metro Rail Red Line, as well as our Metro Express services, we've been pleased the last several years to partner with the city of Leander in providing transportation support for two events in Leander, both the Old Town and Liberty Fests. We've been shuttling folks from the Leander Park and Ride to the event so that folks can kind of park easily and not have to worry about trying to get into the congested event area. So we've been pleased to provide that support as well.
Can you say that again, the Old Town event, you're just offering the shuttle service here?
Yeah. For both Old Town and Liberty Fest, we're providing an event shuttle service from our Park and Ride to allow for remote parking for event goers at our Park and Ride to the events.
You don't have to have metrics on that, do you?
Not immediately in front of me.
Okay.
Do you have a particular number you want us to take up?
I like numbers.
We could get it.
I like numbers.
We've got tons of them. So looking next, in terms of the partnership, obviously, Capital Metro is funded through sales taxes. So looking at the most recent fiscal year completed data is fiscal year 2018. Capital Metro collected just over $5.1 million from the residents of Leander. And the contribution, the cost of the services that we provided, were just over $9.3 million. On the right-hand side of that slide, you can see the breakdown. The vast majority of the cost of services in our Metro Rail service, followed by our commuter bus service. We also do offer subsidies to the residents for our rideshare service, which is our Vampool service. That's the skinny little red line toward the top of that graph. And as well as, we do provide some paratransit service on kind of the west edge of Leander. The...our Route 214, which is a Lago Vista route, serves 1431. And so anything within 3/4 of a mile of that residence...of that line is eligible for our paratransit services, which is services for persons with disabilities.
Ms. Watkins, how is that the 9 million...how is that calculated? How do you determine the cost of the service?
We look at what we are paying for the service. All of our service is provided through contracts through third-party providers. So we look at what it costs us to pay our providers, plus fuel, plus our staff to kind of oversee those contracts. So it's a...this is a fully burden rate of our...all of our operating expenses associated with providing that service.
Can you tell me your cost per mile?
Sorry, I was not finished.
I'm sorry.
Finished. So...
Hold it there.
So when you look at the cost, and I'm just trying to understand, because I know that it's not necessarily a profit situation here. But, you know, if I drive back and forth somewhere and I have a service and say, hey, would you like a ride today? And nobody wants a ride, and I come back home, that costs me money when no one was there to take that service. So I know we have a lot of comments that we need more service, not less. But when we know that we do have empty trains, that is a cost, I'm assuming. There's a cost related to that. So is it a situation that we just need more, I'm going to say calculated, or more planned service? Or how do we...how do we come up with a better return on the investment where people are actually using the service?
Well, I would correct that we don't have empty trains. I mean, we are filling our trains every day, so I think...
Okay. In Leander?
Yes.
We were really not interested in who gets on at Lakeline?
Right.
Not interested at all?
Right. Well, no, I mean...
I'm just going to jump in maybe early as...
We're interested in here.
So, you know, our job is, we run a regional system.
Yes.
And so our numbers are always regional, and we're trying to...we run a train not based on one point to one point. We run a train from multiple places. And I think, to your point, your question would be, how do we get more ROI on an investment?
Yes.
We encourage more people to use a service. And most people in our area would connect land development and economic development into transportation and how those things link together. So the more, you know, like, for instance, you have a large TOD project around this area.
Yes.
That would naturally connect to that, special events, other things of that nature. We can do that. Maybe the analogy I would use is like a road. So our business is peak-driven, just like roads, just like utilities. So there's a road that probably goes right...whatever the name of this street right here, I can't remember the name. It might be very busy at 7:30 a.m., but 11 o'clock tonight, there'll be no one on that street. You have to maintain that road regardless of how many people are using it. So we are the only service that the more people that use it, it becomes more efficient versus a road that actually becomes less efficient. So I would say the ultimate thing we could do is to have more people using that service and then increasing that demand, then we can run the service even more efficiently.
So is it reasonable to say we can determine the best time of service for certain areas and then respond accordingly, as opposed to just adding more empty...I mean, and I'm thinking about...
We do that through our service planning model. So we work with Campo, origin destination planning. They're currently working the 2045 model. Right now, there's a 2040. And that...all transportation planning, regardless of mode, works off some kind of origin destination and modeling of where people are trying to actually move to.
Okay. All right. I have some more questions, but I'll let you go until I get through this.
Yeah. I mean, let's tamper down the questions if we could and then let them get through it, because we got a hard stop at 6:40.
I know.
Hey, any idea what the cost per mile is rail versus bus?
I don't have that handy, but we could get you that.
Anyway, you want to cut that.
Okay.
Yep. Happy to get that worked.
Okay. Thank you.
So to the specific question of Leander riders, on the train, just currently, the average weekday, where we have 225 folks that are boarding on the average weekday at the Leander station. So that's Leander-specific. So next up, to look briefly at some of the improvements we're making and to start looking at the future of Capital Metro's investments in Leander and the region. On our Metro Rail service, we've been making a number of service and safety improvements. We're currently a good way through our Positive Train Control project. Positive Train Control is a federally mandated rail safety program that has been underway for a couple of years and is projected to finish next year. And that will ensure through technology that we are taking a safe system and making it even safer. If you look at the news, you've heard about in other regions rail incidents that have resulted in loss of life and some pretty scary things. And so as a result of those, the federal government decided that we should upgrade the technology on all of our systems. And Capital Metro is well underway doing that. We've spent just about $50 million, $59 million on that project to date. And like I said, we'll finish it up in a little over a year. We also have a number of double-tracking projects. When the Red Line was originally built, it was just one track, which is pretty okay if you're running, you know, long-distance freight rail. But if you're trying to get people back and forth, you need to have double tracks so that there are places where the trains can pass one another. So we've been investing in additional double-tracking projects so that we can have more efficient operations. And that allows us to, in the future, in the long term, be able to operate more frequent services so that we can...once trains can pass one another, it gives you more opportunities to run trains more frequently. And then, most recently, in the spring, we broke ground on our new downtown station. It will also enable us to increase our frequency by increasing the capacity that we have at our downtown station platform to receive trains. That is a $37 million project that is scheduled for 2021 opening. And will be a lovely facility and really allow us to have an attractive facility for folks to access the Central Austin area from all over the region. Our downtown station has been the busiest of our Metro Rail stations, but also the smallest. And so we're very excited to be able to upgrade it and really make it a top-tier, top-notch facility. Additionally, we have service improvements in the works. Starting in January, at our January service change in 2020, we will be offering Saturday rail service to Leander with a 4:00 p.m. start from Leander Station. And that service is really designed to allow folks who want to take advantage of downtown Austin entertainment activities to be able to ride the train and leave their car here. It helps promote safe, you know, no drinking and driving, a safe trip in really a relaxing way to start the evening and end your evening. In November of this year, we are also happy to introduce expanded midday and evening rail service to Leander on top of what we're already operating. As you are well aware, ACC, the Austin Community College, has opened a Leander campus. And we recognize that additional midday trips to Leander will help support that campus and allow even more people to come to utilize that campus. Our Metro Rail has great connections also to the ACC Highland Station. There is a station right there at Highland, so that's a great connection for ACC. In general, the Metro Rail serves a lot of very popular destinations in addition to the ones I've explained, also the Domain, as well as the Plaza Saltillo District, which if you haven't been down to the Plaza Saltillo, just east of downtown Austin, the development there is really exciting, and it's really going to be a dynamic place. In the future, we are working toward being able to connect Leander and the rest of the region to lots of exciting new developments, including the Broadmoor Development, which is going in near the new MLS...the soccer stadium that's being built kind of in the Burnett Road area, near the Domain. And also, the proposed improvements that Capital Metro is incorporating into Project Connect. So Project Connect is Capital Metro's vision for high-capacity transit for the region. And the Red Line specifically will connect with what we're calling the Orange Line at our Crestview Station, as well as connecting with the Blue Line at our downtown station. And that Blue Line is going to be high-capacity transit straight out to the airport. So imagine being able to say, forget it. I'm not even going to worry about driving down there or paying that exorbitant price to park at the airport. I'm just going to hop on a train, transfer to the Blue Line, and go to the airport seamlessly on transit. So those are the sorts of things that we have on tap for the future.
I'm going to jump in just a couple of things to highlight here, because, Mayor, you and I talked about this a couple of times. So midday service was something you actually mentioned and a few other people. And I actually just took the train up tonight, and I was talking with some customers. And two of them said, any chance we're actually going to get an earlier train? To which I said, yeah, we're actually working on that. We're talking to the mayor and the council tonight. And the goal is to try and move some...a couple of our trains. The two customers in the seat next to me were all excited about that. And so this, not only is the ACC connection, it will allow people to get back here earlier. So, you know, especially kids picking up at school, all that kind of extracurricular activities for kids and stuff. So we're thinking that's going to work out well. The other part that Dottie, in this title, says evening. We're working on one later train at night as well, so later departure from here, later departure from downtown. And we haven't got the exact time yet, but probably better part, 45 to an hour later than the train leaves today. And that has been something that has been requested, I'm told, for years by a lot of people, not just in Leander, but Lakeline and other places. And so we're finally at the point that we feel like that's...we're comfortable getting to that stage. That's important.
I mean, is that every...I'm sorry. Is that every day?
Yes.
Okay.
So Friday, Saturday, we already run lanes, but this will do Monday to Thursday, provide that later train. So we're thinking that is going to be really valuable. I want to just pass up this map, and then we can always talk about Project Connect at other times. But Dottie mentioned this, and I think this is a really important component, because, you know, a few of us have talked about building a regional system. We need to figure out how to move more people regionally because our roads are congested for a variety of other reasons. So we've been working on this plan. Lot of deep coordination with the city of Austin, because some of it's on City of Austin Street right away. But Campo, TechStod, and all of our other partners, and we want, obviously, more engagement here in Leander. That's one of the reasons we're here. I'm going to hand you a copy of this, and again, we can talk more later. There's a lot of information online. And we'd love maybe to come out and do a workshop just on Project Connect at some point. But a couple of things to highlight that Dottie mentioned. The Red Line, we envision a multi-line stop at Crestview. So if you work, play, or want to visit anywhere near, say, Crestview and, say, Republic Square, you might transfer to the Orange Line in that area. Conversely, if you're in that area and you want to get to Leander, your connection is much better. And then Dottie mentioned the Blue Line down by the Convention Center, where we're building our current station, to connect there to the airport. So you could actually live in Leander and work at the Oracle Campus and never think about being in a car. Or vice versa, someone flies into the airport, and they're doing business in Leander, et cetera. They would never touch a car. So that's what this whole system is about, trying to turn us into a little bit larger, connected public transit network. So I'll just give you this copy, and again, for your perusal, we can certainly talk more at some other time. So sorry to interrupt you there, Dottie.
What's the estimated trip time to get to the airport?
So we're still...we're doing all the modeling right now to determine... So we're still, we're doing all the modeling right now to determine if it's a bus rapid transit or light rail line on the blue. So all that analysis is going to get done over the next year period.
So I'm sorry, just to be clear, you're saying you would need to take a train and/or a bus to get to the airport?
Well, again, if the blue line and the orange line, we haven't made a decision if it's light rail or bus rapid transit. So bus rapid transit is a little different than a bus. Either, both lines were 100% dedicated right away, just like the red line operates, with stations that look like that regardless of the vehicle, all electric, all off or payment. So the speed and travel will all be the same. The question is, is it a rubber railroad or is it steel? But the right of way would all look just like the red line here, so.
So the blue line will most likely, because I know that the problem is right of way on the blue line, because we discussed this with the previous Cap Metro. I know they had come out a couple of years ago. And it was a really long timeline pushed out to get, get Cap Metro to the, to the airport. And that seemed to be really a very essential part of having a Metro Rails, getting to the airport. And so I'm just wondering, what's the timeline on getting it out to the airport?
So I can't speak to what someone said before. Riverside actually is the envision on the blue line and that's actually the place where we have the most right of ways. So I'm not sure.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We think that's the easiest place to build. The harder place would be the orange line because it's, you know, Guadalupe, La Vaca, North Lamar, some of those sections, but a very important place we need to build out. So likely there will be some type of, you know, Cap Metro is debating what we might bring towards an election next year. But the city of Austin has indicated that they want to do something large on transit to help with a partnership to bring a lot of funding towards some of these lines downtown as well. I should say down throughout the city of Austin, that component of the plan. So I think that, you know, that's not our role, but it seems to me that the mayor and council members at Austin have talked a lot about our next November, some type of referendum on Project Connect. And at that point, then we would go right into working with the federal government, getting their component of it and do a build out.
Okay.
All right. The next service that I'm very excited to talk to you about is our on-demand service we call Pickup. You likely saw one of our fancy new four transit vans as you walked in today. Pickup is Capital Metro's on-demand app-based service with a call-in option. So while it is an app-based service, if you're not an app-based person, we have a telephone number you can call as well. The vehicle that you see here on the slide and that we have parked out front transfers, delivers our customers from point to point throughout a designated geographic region. The vehicle is 100% accessible to people using wheelchairs and holds up to eight passengers. We currently, we all started operating the pickup service in Maynor in June and are in the process of launching four pickup zones within Austin right now. And we're very excited to be planning now our launch for pickup in Leander in November of this year. So we're excited to work with, with you and your designated representatives to help us define exactly what that service zone looks like, understanding where we think your residents would be most interested in getting that kind of transport and then being able to provide then that connection to our bus and rail services in the city without ever even having to get into your car.
I've got a couple of questions about that. So do you all keep metrics on how long it takes between when somebody calls for service and when the bus picks them up? And is there a goal for that that you would provide reports to us on?
Yes, so we, our aim for the pickup service is for a vehicle to arrive within 15 minutes of it being requested. And so that really helps us define the zone. You'll notice if you check out our website, you look at some of the zones that I just mentioned that we've launched, it's not an enormous zone because you're, it's much more difficult to guarantee that 15 minutes if you get too large of a zone. But we think that for a community like Leander, where you've got a good number of residents in a fairly decently compact geographic area, it will allow us to be able to get those folks using transit and be able to get them connected to our bus and rail system without the expense of trying to run a 40-foot bus down the street. And so we recognize that a large fixed route service isn't the right answer for every community. And so with today's technology, we're excited to be able to offer pickup as part of our portfolio of services to help those, those communities that are ready for transit, but maybe not quite dense enough yet for a large fixed route bus to make sense.
And this would be just within the city limits? Or to another city, maybe, maybe to Austin? I mean, how is this-
So this would actually be likely within the city limits. And like I said, we'll want to work closely with you to make sure we understand exactly the bounds that it's defined. It will connect folks both within the city as well as to our transit services. If they wanted to get into Austin, for example, it would, it would connect them to the Lander Station to hop on a bus or a train to get to Austin.
Is it a similar app that you use to, to get a ticket for the rail right now?
It's actually a separate app. It's if you search pickup by Cap Metro in the Apple Store, the Google Store, the Android Store, or whatever all the stores are, that's the, that's the app that is used. And it's much like if you're familiar with Lyft or Uber or those kinds of ride hailing services, the app experience is much the same. You say, here's where I am and here's where I'm going.
It's Uber Transit is the best way to look at it.
But it'll take you anywhere. We don't have to predefine where in the city you can pick it up.
That's right. We're looking, one of the purposes of the workshop, we have this budget, we want to do this, we want to work with whoever is designated from Leander for us to work with. We want some community engagement on this to know where the, where are the most likely points for the most amount of people so we can define that service area. So to your point, area's too big, can't be 15 minutes. If it's real small, it could be five, you know?
That was going to be my, one of my next questions is how many buses are we talking? Like just one to start and then will there be room as it expands to add a second one through the year if it's wildly popular or do we have to wait for the next bus?
I believe it's two to start with. That's the estimate right now. Because we think based on a couple mile rate, two would be able to circulate. And of course, this is all demand driven and the idea is it's ride hailing. And so if three people want to get picked up a certain area to get to the train station, it's going to pick them up. If four people want to get picked up to come to your council meeting, then they're going to get picked up. I know you have a pretty significant senior center, you know, you got, you know, grocery store. So we're, we want to get some guidance from you all of who, who we should be working with here in the community. So Roberto and his team could come out, do a couple of community meetings, really define that. That's why we said November, because we really think the value in this is working with the community to say, here are the hours, here's the zone, really make sure people are aware of it, especially people that you think are the first tier that definitely want it right of way and then the next, you know, how do we kind of, if you will, market it to the next group? So that's the, one of the feedback pieces we're looking for you all to help. How do we connect with Leander? And if that's the city manager or other staff members, we're all ears.
Okay, I have, has there been consideration given to those who don't have phones or are confused by apps? I know if my mother was here, she would not be using a phone to get that. So is there a phone number?
There is. We call it our app-based service with a call-in option. So we have a human being ready to answer the phone that can dispatch, dispatch the trip just the same as the computer would if you did it for me, I think.
Is it, is it still the, is it the 474-1200, our regular Cap Metro phone number or is it a different phone?
There's a separate, there's a separate phone number for the pickup that goes direct to the dispatchers that are managing the pickup.
And it's worked out well in Hudders?
Yeah, in Maynor. Yes, it's, it's been quite successful in Maynor and we think that's really a great model for a suburban community such as Leander to really be able to connect your residents within the community.
So you're talking about identifying a zone, so not all of Leander. It'll be some subset within Leander. Okay. Just checking.
I'd love to help with that, in that outreach. I would love to be involved in that.
Great, thank you.
All right. Just a couple of more slides because I do want to be cognizant of your time. So there, in terms of partnership opportunities, Capital Metro is pleased to have Lander as a member city and we know that partnership is very important. We've had questions about a tract of land Capital Metro owns about 30 acres north of our Lander Station off Heritage Grove. As the area around Heritage Grove grows, especially since the opening of Glenn High School a few years back, you know, we're not 100% sure what we're, what we want to do with that land that we're currently holding. So if you guys have thoughts or opinions or ideas, we're definitely open to discussions about what to do with that tract of land. The area immediately around our Lander Station does have a transit-oriented development zone that is, includes the St. David's property as well as the ACC. All of that effort really since we've built the Lander Station, we've been working closely with the city of Lander to make sure that the land use design for Leander is transit-supported. Because fundamentally, in order for transit to work, in order for economic development to work, you really have to plan your transportation and your land use together or else you end up in a little bit of a mess. And so we've, we've been for a long time talking about the importance of connecting transit and development in the Austin here, and, excuse me, in the Leander area. We look forward to the next proposes of, phases of the proposed north line development as well, which is a development north of our Lander Station, kind of on that same side of the highway, but not even within our designated TOD zone. So we know that there are a number of studies, there's one quoted up there from APTA that for every dollar spent that communities invest in public transportation, approximately $4 is generated in economic returns. APTA is the American Public Transportation Association. That was their study a few years back. We actually did our own Central Texas Economic Impact Study that showed a very similar return. So we know that investing in transit does bring economic benefit to the region. It attracts home buyers, it attracts employers, and it increases property values and therefore increases the tax base to manage and run your city services. So we, we recognize that even the land that we don't own is very important, that we collaborate well together. And then lastly, we have a slide that talks a little bit about how Capital Metro's structure works. So as you know, each member city to Capital Metro contributes a one, one cent on every dollar in their sales tax for transit. By law, every member city must pay the same rate for equity reasons. And so that's a universal action. Cities that exit the transit system are required to pay what the law calls a net financial obligation. And basically it's saying, let's look at the commitments to future projects that have been made under the assumption that this, this city was going to stay in the service area and ensure that those financial obligations that are proportional for that city are covered by the city. So that share is, is a portion based on the residents in the city and is calculated at the date of withdrawal. So that number changes as our assets and liabilities ebb and flow. But as of the end of June, the estimated cost for the net financial obligation for Leander is about $8 million, just to kind of give you an idea of the ballpark. But again, that's, would be calculated at the effective date of any withdrawal. So that number does change, you know, on a very regular basis. But that's just to kind of, to give you an idea. I know that was one of the questions that had previously come up, so we wanted to kind of give you that information. That concludes the overview materials that we prepared for you today, but we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can we give these?
Yes, I do.
So you might have a copy of the schedules and some cut sheets on the, this Metro Rail or Network Express, just for informational, for like one hand.
We didn't get that.
You did not?
I don't think it did.
They weren't emailed back?
I did. Oh, sorry, maybe we did, sorry.
They were emailed, Marcy.
I have lots of copies, I'm happy to give. So we'll leave an extra copy there in case someone.
Council, if we could do one question at a time, just to make sure we all get to. So I see on this map that you have Express Line, you have Georgetown, and you have Hutto. They're not currently in the system. Is that something where it's on the regional perspective?
Yeah, so this is a vision map. And the idea from a vision point of view is we've had lots of interest from lots of people and we're saying as a region of 4 million people, we're going to do that. So right now we run service with Round Rock, we run service in Georgetown. Flugerville is pretty active in doing some analysis and we stand ready if they'd like to do a partnership in some way. I believe Cedar Park may be doing something as well regarding a transit study. We're not involved in that. We'll provide any technical data they need, but I think they're doing something as well. And all the way down south into, we've had conversations with people all the way to San Marcos, not necessarily city officials, but others that want to do things like that. So we're just open to, you know, Elgin is very interested in doing some stuff with us as well. So we're, we're just in the partnership game. So anyone that wants to work with us, we're happy to work with them.
When you do that one-off type system, is that, is that a set formula that applies to each city based on number of miles or, you know?
Yeah, so the, the way our Georgetown and Round Rock situation works and Flugerville would be the same or anyone else, it's a contracted service. It's, it's for bus operations, not for rail, but bus operations. And it's 100% fully burdened rate. So as an example, let's say you had zero today and Leander wanted to join Cap Metro and get the services today, that contract would be for about $9.3 million a year. So it's a 100% fully burdened. So no, no, none of, no money raised out of Leander or Austin or Maynor or Lagavista can be used to support anything in Round Rock or Georgetown. They have to pay the entire expense. So if there's a quarter FTE, a Dottie staff, plus fuel, plus vehicle, capital depreciation, they have to pay that whole.
It's the same rate for everybody is, is what I'm, the question I'm asking. Based on what kind of service Round Rock wants or what kind of service-
We have a bus hourly service versus paratrain, if you will. And then there's some other factors around that, but yeah.
Okay.
I'm curious, when, when did you all abandon the maintenance operations to be moved here on the Heritage Grove site? I mean, that's why it was purged, that's what we were told years ago. So I'm, I'm curious when that decision was made to no longer have that here.
Yeah, I wouldn't say we've abandoned that. What we're saying is we have a plot of land and we are open to work with Leander as a partner. If you think that there is more utility that works for the partnership, we're happy to have those discussions. So at current, we do not need more rail yard capacity. If Project Connect happens and other things happen, maybe we would do that. But what we want to express is we, we want to be a partner. The mayor has talked to me about that parcel and saying, would we be open to having discussions? And I'm, I'm suggesting we are open to having discussions because right at today's moment, we wouldn't build a rail facility. But it was built, that land and some others were built, I think strategically to say, we are going to be larger region one day and we got to start buying a little bit of real estate. As a CEO, I wish we bought a lot more real estate in 90 and 2000 when it was a lot cheaper. But those are, those are the kind of pieces that we have, so.
Okay. So that means that you're planning on holding on to it and possibly letting somebody else use it? I, I just want to clarify what the-
No, we're open for discussion. So again, as the mayor-
To sell it even?
Yeah. It's, it's, again, we, we need to do what's right for Cap Metro and if there's something-
Attract a corporate relocation, which would help them, help us, you know?
Yeah. We have a piece of land that we are willing to see if there's a variety of options that work better for our partnership.
Well, on a positive note, I would just like to mention, my husband, he's took the bus to the airport one day. There was, there was, there was a struggle of how to get him there and he, he wound up taking the bus.
How long did it take him?
It took him about as long as it would to drive. He took the bus, it took maybe an hour, I think. He had to take two buses to get there.
Because you'd switch downtown from the express.
But it really helped us out and he was happy with the price.
Yeah, I took the bus to the airport two days ago. It's almost every time. It's actually incredibly fast.
Yes, it was.
And as Donnie mentioned, the toll lane for the express bus service is what's made this service so fantastic. And our buses, how many, how many new commuter buses have we brought on in the last?
We added six buses to our fleet and then we just, we just replaced our old, 28 of our oldest buses with a larger commuter vehicle. So we increased our capacity by about 40% just by replacing the vehicle with a slightly larger-
More fuel efficient, USB charge ports, reclining seats, Wi-Fi. And what we've really found, especially on the 985, is lots of days we are, we're so full, we really put every asset we have out there to meet the need right now. And we're a little concerned, pretty frankly, how much more demand we can handle on that line. We're, between here and Lakeline, both are almost at full capacity every trip.
So piggybacking on Hearst, why not go from Lakeline or potentially Leander straight to the airport instead of going downtown first?
Hold the way downtown.
Yeah, so our current service is an express service. That's not an airport service. Part of this long planned regional, we've been talking about is should, should we get to a regional center? Tech Ridge is a good example. That's one of the things a group of us have been talking about. And could Tech Ridge become like a, lack of better, pretend it's a Buc-E's for transit? I don't know, maybe, I'm trying to be the Texas now.
I like Buc-E's.
I like Buc-E's.
And I'm still, I'm still learning. I'm still learning, yeah, yeah. But, but a large center where we would have the terminus of our Orange Line, where we would have routes from our Round Rock, our Georgetown, maybe from here to there to Airport Express, that kind of thing. So we're, we're kind of working to say there should be a regional transportation in Tech Ridge and there should be a regional transportation in Slaughter. So we could capture both like Williamson County and Hayes County. And, and, and you really see a lot of commute, commuter express buses in a lot of other markets. So I came out of the Boston market and that is a pretty, you know, place like Leander that would be a direct to the airport. And I think as our airport grows, so they're going to be expanding, we're expand, as we become a bigger region, we're going to have to think differently than today. And I brought that up, a fair amount of airport expresses from big regional centers.
Even from Lakeline, let's say you only did it morning and afternoon, you know?
That's the problem, that it doesn't work. So the flights aren't, because the flights aren't in the morning and the afternoon, right? That's part of the issue. You need to run a service so frequently that everyone can rely on it. So, and the more frequent you run, the more money it costs. So we got to get to that balance where the demand and the financials work out. And part of the issue with the airport is, we don't have 35 with a designated toll lane like we do on MOPAC. And so a 35 had a toll lane like MOPAC, we would be talking tremendously different commuter or bus service. Probably from here, we would run different options, from the south, we'd different options. So all these things kind of interplay together.
You go 45, you go 1838 or 45.
Yeah, and that's part of what we're, we're having conversations with CTRMA too.
So we're the only, there's one other city. What are your partners in the region? Melers, sorry.
The same question.
Yeah, you've got Maynor, Lagavista. Lagavista, Point Venture, UOL, Austin, Johnstown?
Johnstown.
San Leana.
San Leana.
What about train?
Excuse me?
Train.
Train?
Does train all, all those too?
This is.
Where's the train go?
The train?
It's Leander and Austin.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, as, as you'll see in the map, there's the proposed Green Line, which is also part of Capitol Metro's train system. And that would then connect Maynor by train as well. And they actually have been working on a Transportation Opportunity District, the TOD as well. They were having considerations, preliminary meetings.
Yeah, preliminary. We're doing a study, a federal transit administration study on that corridor right now. Lots of developers wanting to work that, Maynor, those, City of Elgin. I got a note from Elgin two weeks ago wanting to move along the process as well. So part of it is the red line that we currently operate also runs freight. And I'm not sure everyone fully understands that. So we run a freight operation, one of the only, very unique in the United States. So it's a, a public-private partnership. And that, that partnership allows some revenue to be captured that we can actually put into the service to help maintain the, the track infrastructure.
And you're talking about double tracking. Double tracking is still going to Lakeline, is that correct? The current plans with your double track system is supposed to be coming to Lakeline?
So we just did four double tracking sections. And we're doing a modeling right, modeling system right now. We just got a new software modeling system to determine the, kind of the optimal locations for further double tracking investments. So there's one that Dave is looking at up in this. We, we need to ultimately do something between Leander and Lakeline to facilitate a, one further notch to get us to a higher service level, so.
So what would that be? What do you look, I mean, is it more riders that you needed to get to?
No, 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 just infrastructure wise, where we would put, like, so the model would say, where is, where's the best place in the line that the trains would meet to pass? So it's all, it's kind of a modeling exercise, not pretend there's zero people in the train or a million people in the train. This is all about the physics of where trains pass, if you will. So like every double section we build, so like downtown station benefits people in Leander. Well, I, I value more than they, I live downtown, I get no benefit out of that unless I'm going northbound. But we, we currently have one bay downtown, so it's a pinch point and our service is very constrained. This, this station will have three bays with two platforms and that allow us to turn over trains much faster. And that frequency leads to more capacity. So if you're living in Leander or anywhere else in the service network, when we get downtown station done, your commute becomes much, much better because of investment there. And the double tracking section we did at Howard is good for people on Lakeline and Leander, just like it's good for people at MLK Station. It's all about how the train.
How is it good for us unless we have increased departures and arrivals?
Well, that's what we'll do, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah, so it's all about frequency. We're trying to build it where we have 15 minute frequency.
And I, I understand that, but are you saying at what point, and maybe that was your question, at what point does, does this reach to Leander and not just stop at Lakeline?
Well, right now, we do.
As far as.
So Dottie mentioned here, so right now, we run service to Leander. There's two trains that we want to run midday. And there's one train that we're proposing to run evening service, so one, one later train. And then starting when our positive train control, next phase is done, at the end of this calendar year, we're going to run Saturday service all the way to Leander. So right now, we run no Saturday service on the whole line because we shut down. When we come back to Saturday service in January, we're going to run from Leander, downtown, downtown Leander.
And that's going to be till 1:35 in the morning as well?
Uh, Dave, what's?
Two, three?
The last departure would be somewhere around 12:30, 12:45.
The last departure out of downtown.
Yeah, which gets up here.
So 1:35ish.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I don't want to be stuck downtown. Well, I'm not going, I'm too old to go anyway, but I'm talking about the people that want to go downtown, right?
Yeah.
And, and I'll just.
I'll just add.
They're not going to leave at 12:30, by the way.
I'll just add, on the, on the train, from, from personal experience riding it, the, it, it's, it's got to do, the double tracking has to do with those choke points. Cause when I've ridden the train, right now, we don't, before they instituted some extra double tracking, you'd have to stop and stop longer because you had to let the train that was ahead of you finish loading up, finish loading up the, the commuters at that location and then move on. It has to do with where the trains can pass each other. It doesn't have to do with, and this was my, my misunderstanding when I was getting into this, because I'm still trying to figure out what all this is about. It's not that you've got the, the two tracks and one runs one direction and one runs all the way the other direction. They have to do literally with, with passing points and choke points. And by putting in the double tracking, this allows for, it more locations, it allows for more places where they can pass. So the, the passengers aren't sitting on a rail further out for longer periods of time to allow that other train to load. So that does benefit people, you know, in Leander as well, because then they're not sitting down, yeah, longer for them to get up and get back.
And the ultimate gain is to be able to run more frequently.
Exactly, and that allows more frequency.
So it doesn't matter, like whatever the mo, the model said.
Exactly, it's very, it's complicated. I, I'm still trying to figure this stuff out. When I first came on the board, they said, you're going to be drinking through a fire hose. I still feel like I, I'm, I'm drinking through a hose turned on high sometimes.
Yeah, and it really, like, if the model said double tracking between Leander and Lakeline is the only thing that matters and don't do anything anywhere else, then that's where the investment should be. If the model said it's MLK through Salteo is the only section that matters, then that's where the. So the geography has nothing to do with the service. The service is the whole line and wherever, so it's like a two-way street to a one-way street, to a two-way street. And, and let's be honest, the red line was built somewhat inexpensively for what the outcome was desired. And now our job is to take that line and add value to it to turn it into what the vision all along was. And each day, we're getting closer to that, and this year, we're making massive strides.
And, and I'll just add to that too, is, is, and this gets back to the, from my perspective at least, we're talking about Mayor Hill, your idea for the, for the airport run, is right now, what I've noticed is where, is that, is that Capitol Metro has been increasing the frequency of the 985 bus run in large part to kind of offset some of these, the, the reduction in the train service because of the positive train control project, because we're kind of, we're having to scale back some of the train service. And, and as he's pointed out, the, the buses are filled to capacity. And I, I know not too long ago, I took a bus and, and the, the buses were literally, there was, there was one bus and then there was an overflow bus running right behind it because we couldn't meet the capacity for everybody that was trying to get from downtown on the bus to come back up north. And what, what ends up happening is once, once the train project, the, the upgrades are completed, you know, beginning at the, getting back to the beginning of this, of the new year in January, is that then you've got those options where you've got the bus, you've got the train, and then the capacity kind of spreads back out and can grow back up again. And it's that, I think the same concept with any potentially proposed, you know, airport line, is that then you've, whether it's Project Connect and you're going to come out of, you know, Lakeline on the train, connect down to downtown, get on a blue line and connect out that way. Or potentially, you know, go into, say, the Tech Ridge Center and, and connect onto a, onto a bus that way. It's providing these other options with, which then provide more opportunities so that you have, you, you have more capacity overall. I think that's one of the things that we're looking at now, is just ensuring that there is that capacity there, whether it's building the double tracking in places as we're addressing the positive train control at the same time, or building up the capacity through extra 985 and 987 bus lines. The end result is more people can get there without being pinched and, and getting stuck in congestion and things.
So you have them options. And I think the, the airport express is, is, I've heard that from multiple people. It's obviously, as I just mentioned, it's a little more complicated than the obvious. The obvious is, hey, just have a bus and I'll take the airport. Well, if everyone had the same flight, that would work, right? It's not like rush hour. But I think, you know.
I think they do, it's five AM.
The one, the one thing that I think is, is really valuable for Leander is because you've crossed the 50,000 limit, you're now going to be on Campo. And I think the regional conversation at Campo needs to be a little bit more about things like, what, what is the potential if a Tech Ridge is a regional center? Cause that's going to have to involve Williamson County, it's going to have to involve TechDOD, it has to involve Austin, it has to involve CTRMA, it has to involve UOL, Round Rock, et cetera. So I think you being at that table is going to provide a lot different opportunities to think more holistically about the needs of your residents than being kind of out of that, formally out of that group.
So if it's okay, can we shift gears to funding? And because obviously that's a big thing. So, you know, as we talk, Randy, I think the first day you and I met, you know, I'm a big believer in a regional type system as well. So the idea that we're one of a very few number of cities that are in the system is, you know, it seems silly to me, right? So, but I know from talking to other mayors in other cities that the one cent for a lot of cities, especially cities our size, is a non-start. Again, somewhat out of your control. But, you know, obviously, you know, let's just say it was a quarter cent or a half cent. I mean, you know, even if it's a quarter cent, you, you have a better chance of getting a city like Cedar Park in. Cedar Park should be in, it makes no sense for a city on the way not to be there. And by the way, they're moving Bell Boulevard closer to the rail stop. They have a stadium, that they have sports teams. There's a lot of reasons, yet the one cent's a non-starter. So, you know, I guess my question to you is, why haven't we done this in the past? Looked at, you know, the cost structure because basically, let's say, you know, you lower ours to a quarter, so you give up three and a half million dollars. Well, you make that up with one city, you know, Cedar Park. And then you get a Georgetown, and then you get, you know, I, I could go on and on and on, right? So it, it, your revenue goes like this, from having more players, your ridership goes up. And again, back to what you said earlier, the more riders you get, the more efficient you are, right? The more federal grants you get based on ridership. So there's a lot of reasons. I guess my question is, why haven't we been talking about this for 10 years? Redoing the cost structure? Because small cities are different than Austin. I mean, basically Austin and, and I'm, I'm saying this to the camera for all the Austin board members, you know? This is a system that brings people to your city to work in your companies. This is a system that brings our residents to your town to shop in your town and you're not paying anything for it. So you're getting a good deal already. But small cities like us, for instance, we have a $41 million budget. Five and a half million dollars is obviously a big hit for a town with a $41 million budget. So, you know, the reality is it's extremely difficult for a city our size to be in at one cent. It just is. The, the bigger we get, we're growing at 12% a year. You know, we've got highways that need to be fixed, we've got new roads that need to go in, we've got water lines that need to go in, you know? And, and I don't want to have a conversation with our police force saying, you got, you know, you want five officers, but you can get three, you know? And that's kind of where we're all coming from. So, you know, as we talked on the phone, you know, to me, it's simply math. And the math has to work. And that math, I believe, if we all looked at it a little bit differently in a regional type perspective, even if it is a quarter, I would, I would do the math and tell you, you'll quadruple your revenue at a quarter percent. Because at a half cent, it's going to be harder to get a Cedar Park in, it's going to be harder to get a Georgetown in, it's going to be harder to get, you know, other cities our size in at half a cent. But even if it were half, you got a better chance than at one. You got almost no chance at one for cities like us that it's just too big of a hit.
They're not going to remove their 4A, 4B, they're not going to lose it.
So I guess the question, so I, I guess I would respond this way, which is, why things haven't been looked at in the past? I moved here 15 months ago. So I think it's probably best that I defer on answering that.
What took you so long?
You know?
Really, I would agree to that.
So the law, and, and I think we just got to be on the same page with a couple of things. So Dottie went through a slide. There, there is no quarter cent, half cent, there's a cent. That's the state law, and by constitution, everyone pays the cent.
Today.
Today, exactly.
But legislation.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we all, exactly, we all know that there is no, like, just verbiage. And, you know, we're at this table, but other people see it on TV or other points is, there is no, if you only reduce this to a quarter, I just want us to make sure we all know that there is no Capitol Metro can do anything.
Can, can we also add that there's no deal, there's no contract, that this is wrapped up in transportation law? Cause a lot of our citizens are like, you know.
Just redo the contract?
Negotiate, get a better deal for Leander. There is, we, there, we can't do that.
Yeah, well, and I think the slide shows, we, we think Leander's getting a very good deal. Again, it's all perspective.
Which is another question.
Yeah, that's another question.
I have a question of that.
But it, it isn't all or nothing, but under the law, it isn't all or nothing thing. You guys are either in or you're out. And that's been the law for 30 years.
But let's also talk about the other part of the law, right? So I know you said there's.
Self-driving cars, 30 years.
So there's, there's challenges, you said, on hiring police and water lines. The penny, generally my understanding, and if I'm wrong on this, but this is what I've been told multiple times by counsel and others, this penny is either available for transit or economic development corporation. It's not available for local money.
And, and it's semantics because, you know, if I want to attract a company and I don't have a penny, then I've got to take it from somewhere else.
Sure, I just want to be.
It can be infrastructure.
So while, yes, you're correct.
Kind of like police force. Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we're talking, us versus the public at large, assuming that the penny could go, oh, well, we want to hire more police and firefighters. That penny cannot be used for that. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
But again, it, money that's taken out of general revenues because you don't have the one cent could therefore be, stay where it's at, so.
Yeah, you could do different things with your ledger, no question. I just want, for the average person, I, I think that these tax laws are, and, and funding schemes are very complicated for the average person. And I think it's important that we all just, we're all using the same fact base for the average person and what that is. Yeah, so I, I, you brought up that, again, I can't speak to the past. That the future is, we're here, we're trying to bring the best possible service to Leander. We're trying to show that we value partnerships. Again, whether it's real estate and there's something we can all work together. You were asking about additional service. Part of our plan is to bring some additional service. We, we actually think we're bringing a lot more additional service. We're going to do some midday, evening, Saturday. We have a ban out here that we want to run, actually, you know, Uber Transit, if you will, for Leander and the community. We want to work with you all on that. Councilmember Lott, but she said she wanted to be involved in, are there any others? If you, especially as you join Campo, want to bring a, a regional conversation together, you know, that, that, that to me is a policymaker aspect, not, not staff-driven. And but Capitol Metro, from a technical point of view, would certainly be, I would assume, be brought into the table, whether it's us or CTRMA or TechDOD or Campo or other staff. But, you know, now with your seat towards Campo, that might be something that policymakers from a region want to get towards. I, I, I believe Capitol Metro, we, we are feeling is we need to be more regional in nature. How policymakers reach a legislative ability to fund regional needs is really what elected officials are for. And staff does what policymakers say is policy.
Interesting.
Yeah, so. And my wife's made it very clear, I'm not wanting to be a policymaker, so.
My wife has too.
I just, I want to say that having the service within the city is, I, I don't know this, I think it's a big deal. I mean, it's, it, this, to date, it's only served other areas. It's served people that are here to get them somewhere else, but to have people, when I see people walking down 2243 to go to the grocery store because they don't have, they don't have transportation. You know, we talked about what problem is this solving? And you said, transportation is, we don't really have a transportation issue when it gets to, if you can drive to Austin, you don't have a transportation problem, you have a vehicle to get you there. It may not be the most convenient, maybe you want to do something different, but those that don't have transportation, it's not serving those that don't have transportation because they can't get to the bus stop or the train stop anyway. And that's the problem we need to solve. So by doing that, I, I say, thank you for working with us. That will serve a community that has not been served.
Thank you. And again, the more I think we work together on defining that, the better success. We want this to be successful. Success to us is that vehicle is full all the time, right? Again, that, we're like one of the only, we're like the only government service, but the more people that use something, it becomes more efficient. It's literally the opposite of almost all of our other government services. But like in Maynor, what do we go, we were, on a fixed bus, we were averaging like sometimes eight people a day.
So our, in, in Maynor, we were running a deviated fixed route. So essentially a bus that was just kind of going up and down the street and would, would, would move a couple of blocks over to drop you off if you needed to go to a different destination. We were averaging about eight to 10 riders a day, that was a weekday service. And we launched the pickup service in June and we're currently averaging over 70 riders a day. We've seen a tenfold increase almost in that service in just a few months. And so we were blown away, we knew people out there would, would. And so, um, we were blown away, we knew people out there would, would like it. We knew that a suburban resident, primarily residential community would have transportation needs and they would like the service. But it has been overwhelmingly popular, um, and so we're very excited to be able to launch the same model here in Leander.
And if it goes well, and we go from two, and then six months later, we need a third, that's, that's not bad for us. That, that is, yes, the cost higher, but that means we're doing what our, our only purpose is, is to help move a community. So, you know, like you mentioned profit, we certainly don't make profit, that's not our job. So if somehow this becomes even more successful, that's good for both of us. You're getting people to be able to move, and we're actually moving, moving them, uh, as, as efficiently and cheaply as possible, so.
On that note about moving people, um, we've talked about it before, the traffic lights are controlled by you guys in a lot of areas. And one of the biggest contributors to congestion here is Cap Metro. It's, it's that everything just stops, right? How can we, how can we transfer that, work together in a different way?
You know a little bit more about this. You wanna come on up, Dave? This is the one, uh, next to our station, this is Dave Dak, our VP of Rouse, some of you I think.
So, yeah, we, you know, we have, we can program the preemptions, but, uh, we would have to work through Tech Dot. Like a city like Austin, they control how much timing is in those preemptions. But for the smaller cities, that's a Tech Dot function, but we'd be happy to liaise between the three of us.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Because it is a source of frustration in the morning when everybody's trying to get to work.
From, from our perspective, we, you know, we kinda take the inputs that Tech Dot gives us.
Yeah.
And we program our signal system to, to react. So when, you know, when a train comes, it knows that it needs ninety seconds of preemption because it needs to reach out to that traffic light, and then this, this crossing warning case, we set that up based on their guidelines, so we would be certain to add that conversation.
So I guess again, from a great workshop conversation, if, if it's the city manager as an example, or someone else that Dave should work directly with here, from a technical point of view, we, we're happy to do that.
Not me.
You might not notice I said Dave, not me either. So maybe this, it would be something.
Yeah, absolutely, Dave, thank you.
We'll make the contact on that.
And then second of all is, and, you know, we've talked about the fact that Leander kinda is providing transportation for cities that don't pay, right? So, it's Cedar Park using our station, and Liberty Hill, Passas, Bertram, on and on and on, Marble Falls. So, um, do you mind if we put a toll booth right at Metro Drive?
I'm not sure that's legal.
Watch us.
I would like to see, I would like to see a lot more tolls, but again, I'm not a policymaker.
You know, in, in Dart and Dallas face the same thing, and that is something that they went to, is they sold a parking pass. Or gave it to the residents, and then everybody else had to pay for the monthly parking pass.
So that, again, I know you're being a little juked with that, with the toll, but one of the things we're gonna have a serious conversation with in our long-term planning process, uh, relative to Project Connect, is, is parking. And we're gonna have to get to a point, like you mentioned, some other cities that are along the alignment, that are not currently members. Well, we're gonna have to get to a point where we're, like, we're not gonna be expanding parking without people having to start paying for parking. And so, you know, we might have to get to a point where a Leander or Austin person, as example, has a sticker, and Bankett Park, and anyone else is gonna get charged, you know, five dollars a day to park or something. So, th- those are part of the analysis we're thinking about. Part of this is how this whole plan kinda comes together in the demand model, but it's certainly something that is, is, is in our brain.
We get half of that.
What about, um, a, a reduced rate for the systems of Leander?
Well, we might do, well, all we might do is where it's free for Leander and it's, and it's a cost for, for someone. Not, and so th- those are part of the, uh, some analysis we're gonna have to do.
Pa- parking, not, not tran, not the, not the actual.
I'm talking about the ridership.
Not the fair.
Yeah, one thing we should mention on the fair though, in case this is brought up. So, our board, Eric, uh, voted for this last December, uh, all kids ride free in our service area, so K to twelve. So on this pickup service, if you have, uh, you know, if it's a family member with two kids, then the kids are gonna ride for free, or if they're gonna go somewhere, that, that, that's, that's free as well. So that's, uh, up to eighteen years old, that's a, a member, you know, student, so that's another really good community benefit.
What's the youngest age you can go and chaperone on that?
Um, we require, um, children under the age of six to be with an adult, we recommend children under the age of ten ride with an adult or an older sibling. And so there's, there's a middle ground in there where if you've got a sixteen-year-old sister, um, it's okay, but, um, we recommend that people, that, that if they're under ten, that they at least have an older sibling, if not an adult.
So those are not free because they're not riding with an adult?
No, those are free.
They are still free.
Yeah, cause they're still considered K through twelve.
And I apologize, we should probably mention that earlier, cause, uh, as we design this service, if that's valuable for, for certain parts of Leander, then in a, in the zone, that's another really good benefit.
So, uh, question, and I, I don't have an idea in mind, I just wanna throw it out there. So you said you rode the bus, or the, the train here?
Yep.
So how did you get to the building?
To this building?
Yes.
I took the new pickup vehicle.
Eric drove you?
No, the, the pickup vehicle. At the end of the year, we have a.
Okay. So you arranged service to get you over here.
Well, I wouldn't say it that way. We want to, A, bring it to this meeting, so people could see that. And I went wide, we, we decided as it rolled in to just stop and pick us up at the train station.
So, so you can see that if, if someone were to come here, which, you know, we have a concept, we wanna have a, a thriving downtown. We wanna have a thriving, um, you know, TOD area. I mean, it's, we're, we're getting there, it's, it will happen eventually.
Definitely will happen.
So, it'd be ideal if we had people from Austin that wanna come here, and when they get here, what do they do? You know, do we offer pedicabs to get them where they, where they wanna go? Can you work with, I mean.
Yeah, that's what this new pickup service, it solves this.
Okay.
If you've heard the idea of first, last mile, it's like Uber Lyft, that, that's what this is. So I wel, I welcome you, the vehicle's still up there? Right?
Oh, I saw it, I saw it.
And, uh, we can also show you the app, just offline at the meeting if you want. It is so, if you've ever used Uber Lyft, you, it's, it's off, it's the exact same. And, you know, a lot of our times in Maynor, it's, we say fifteen minutes, but I mean, sometimes it's five minutes.
Well, I guess the other thing is, you know, I've heard, um, conversation about being a safety issue. Say somebody doesn't wanna have a, uh, to cross the street, just to cross the street, is we have an issue, and that may be something that we have to solve, but I don't, I'm not sure what, what, uh, Cap Metro can do to, to work with us.
Yeah, we can, um, we're happy to, like, uh, I guess sit with your engineers or, or whoever on that, and if there's a way we can help contribute to that in, in a positive, positive way, we're happy to do that, so. We wanna make our stop as accessible as possible. And so any way we can all work to facilitate that is good, and, and I, and I, I think you are right, your TOD is gonna happen, and it's gonna happen really solidly. Uh, the growth of this region is just too significant for eventually, we're not gonna be surrounded here with a lot more development. It's just not, it's impossible, that won't happen. And I, and my understanding is you have a lot of residents that have moved here, cause it's a beautiful community, that, um, also commute to downtown, that moved here and, because of the train in that aspect. So you're trying to balance the two kinda groups together, plus the group that you said that needs some transportation options, and we think the pickup will help with that third.
And the, the pickup also is accessible, it's ADA accessible, right? So it can serve, uh, residents with disabilities as well, correct?
Yes.
Sir, I, I think the council member was referring to, we have worked in the past with, uh, Mayor Hill, who's council member, about an idea for circulated service. And a fix route bus usually requires fully accessible bus stop locations. Pickup service, now you're going door-to-door, or, or, or that's, that's the ability that that offers.
That's what we need.
Yep.
Just curiously, do you, do you work with any private companies, whether it's grocery stores, or, you know, box stores, and offering parking at some of those locations on maybe a weekend? I'm thinking of areas like Crystal Falls, where you've got a Randall's right there, that potentially people could park at, and then the connector would pick them up there versus, I don't know.
We do a lot of park-and-ride stuff, uh, and you'll see this around the country as well, uh, during the week, cause that's mostly commuter time. Weekend, you know, you don't, it's, there's no, um, uh, rush hour, if you will, so the spread is so much. Weekend, weekend stuff is, um, around the country, I'm talking even in places like, I live in Boston, where people say, we want this weekend service. And it's never as many people as use a weekend as you think, until you get to that, like special events or a different ballgame, that's a big thing. Or you get to such a volume of people, then it really starts impacting, um, or people choosing it. It's just, it's just the way it is, it's, it's like the airport, right? Right now, we probably don't have enough demand for an airport direct service, but at some point, we would have, I think we have enough demand in the Northwest for an airport direct service. And that might be a Leander Lakeline direct, but, you know, at some point, we're just gonna be large enough, we're gonna have to start thinking differently than what we do now. And if you went to, I know you lived in Chicago, or, um, you know, the Boston area, or New Jersey, or Atlanta, there's Airport Expresses throughout the whole region, because the volume of people is so high and traffic's so bad.
And I, I'd say to your, to your question, to Mayor Hill, is, um, it's also gonna depend on the geography, the, that geo-fencing the area that, that y'all set. Cause if, I, I guess, were you thinking about that, that if somebody, if, if they were outside of the region, like if they, they live down by the golf course, and maybe they, they can't get the, the door-to-door, but if they got up to the, the Randall's.
If you took them all the way, way out to Grand Mesa, it's gonna take forever versus having a, you know, a, a parking facility, uh, you know, and I guess Randall's would be the most logical place around there.
And a lot, a lot of that is gonna come back to, to whoever you guys delegate, or however you want, Cap Metro to be working with you guys to set that footprint in the region, the area within the city, to, to, to cover. And again, again, with that timeframe of the fifteen minutes, and once you figure that out, then you can, you can start, you know, we all, we all can start working together to figure out the timeframe on that of, okay, can't get all the way out to Grand Mesa, but maybe, hey, maybe you could talk to, you know, talk to, to, you know, Randall's in that regard, and hey, if somebody wants to drive and park it, you know, Randall's to then, you know, take the, the, the on-demand pickup to, you know, someplace close.
And I, and I think the important thing is, we've worked together to establish this program to work away, we all wanted to be successful. And to me, I'm a big believer in crawl, walk, run, I'd rather start a gear and be really successful, and all of us being under pressure to do more, than do something that we think, all of us, think people wanna move, versus the people that actually are trying to move. And then six months later, we say, well, that wasn't successful, and then we have to reinvent the wheel. So to me, the more people that you can connect us with, and we're happy to come out and do a couple of community meetings, Roberto's team, uh, we could do something at the rail station one night, to kinda interact with people there. If it's the senior, uh, center and do something there, it's with some city staff, if it's with the grocery, whatever. And then the more that comes together, we can, we, we, the key is getting this off the ground right, and making it successful, and in building, versus trying to do too much off the start and then kinda failing.
What about the bus to the domain, was that ever looked at? Is that something that, whether it's from Lakeline direct, directly to the domain, or, you know, here?
Yeah, so we had some conversation, Roberto and I, um, really hard from a demand modeling point, like on a Saturday, uh, to do that. Part of the issue is, where we currently are situated in the domain is not, it's very, uh, circuitous, I guess, probably the best way. We don't, we, we can't run through the domain that probably is effectively a transit as we would want, uh, the way the development started. Where we see the potential value is really the train coming back here, uh, and then we're thinking, should, in the shorter term, start thinking of, um, maybe a pickup type of vehicle that would go from Kramer Station into the domain. Uh, we run a current shuttle today, and should that kinda tweak and, and be a little different, especially on weekends? And then secondarily, we're having some part, partnership conversations with a developer in Broadmoor area of the domain, to working towards maybe a new rail station, which would close Kramer, and then the Broadmoor Station would be integrated to the domain, and then then people could actually just walk into the domain. And that's the domain back here, and vice versa. So, there's kind of a, a shorter period that we're gonna, we're doing some analysis on based on your request, and then second is, how do we really make the rail line have stations a little better set up where they ultimately should be?
And, and I'll say, you're, you're, you're not the only one who's mentioned that, Mayor Hill, I've had several folks in my neighborhood, over, over around the Lakeline Station and every ranch, who've expressed the same concerns, is, hey, wouldn't it be great if we could get to the domain? Wouldn't it be great if we could get to the airport? Top two things that came to me when I, when I announced to folks on my, in my neighborhood that I was gonna be on Cap Metro board, and I asked them just broadly, I said, what are your interests? And the top two things that came back to me were, airport, there were, 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 were two things, the biggest two things were the airport and domain.
And you can't get the both now, the, the key is how do we make it a lot better?
Yeah, exactly.
So that, that is the key, and we're working pretty hard on that. And I hope, and I hope you see some of this planning that we're doing here, like everything, it's like Leander, right? Leander can't go from what you hope it to be for some of your development plans tomorrow. Some of this is a crawl, walk, run, but I think we're putting a lot of emphasis on trying to make a whole region work.
So we're having this little side conversation over here that we don't wanna take people to the domain.
You wanna make this your new domain, right?
And the key really is frequency, right? If the service works, um, high enough frequency, then people can go where they're gonna be, and the key is activity centers all along the line.
I, I'll tell you, I'm looking forward to being able to hop on at Lakeline and come up here to, to visit Northline, when you guys, you know, get that, or, or be able to hop on and come up and, and, and get on the on-demand pickup, but, and come up and come over here to.
Old Town.
To Old Town, exactly.
Or City Council. I know you like Old Town.
He does love it.
I love it.
Especially standing in the back, right?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it.
It is a partnership, so, you know, gotta find a way to make it work for all of us.
And the, the phone's always available, so let's, um, again, whatever happened to past, 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 but the relationship, we wanna be as open as possible.
Thank you for putting Leander on this map, whoever did that. Thank you for putting Leander on there.
Turk had this every, like, at least twice a year?
Twice a year, happy to do that.
A quarter, I don't know.
And we're happy if there's a very specific thing, like for instance, for pickup, we work towards that. If we need to, you know, a quarterly update that comes in, we would have Chad. He's our VP of, he could come on a quarterly basis and give update on how pickup's going, both the community engagement, ridership, uh, happy to do that kind of stuff.
And if we can get those metrics, I would, just to be, you know, actually.
That was, uh, for, for Old Town and, for Old Town and, and.
Just in general, yeah, just like.
What, what it was, what user, you, specifically?
My, my specific was Liberty Fest and Old Town. And so just those KPIs that.
Were you, were you looking at boarding in, in particular, or just, just any members?
And again, if you think about Liberty Fest for July fourth, and you want to carry more people, the, the more we kinda, if you will, educate the community on the, to make themselves, avail themselves of the opportunity. That's, that's really valuable for us too, cause we can, we can bring out a few buses to run, but if they're not aware of the service and kind of really, kinda push to it, then, again, they're sitting traffic.
Well, and that's the thing about the domain route, I mean, you have to let people know, we have to let people know. Because we can't just throw out, well, we're gonna get service twice a month, and then we don't all do a good job of letting people know that that's when it is. Because we, you know, we want people to use it, I mean, we don't like seeing the numbers of one percent. I mean, we, we gotta get people to use it.
So, and so anyways, again, I, it sounds like, well, uh, I know you have a new chairman, I haven't met him yet, but, uh, a lot of work there, we got some tasks that. So we have some tasks, we're happy to, and we'll follow back up with some of those, and we're happy, again, as frequency, if it's twice a year.
Sure.
And more, uh, and more media on pickup specific, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, and definitely, as we get somebody on Campo, I think that, that conversation's gonna have to evolve there, so definitely. Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it so much.
Appreciate it.